Review the select board goals and try to balance the budget goals and make them line up with where the select board wants us to go. We look and work with town staff to try to be creative and find ways to reduce costs. Town staff has been very helpful in that over the last couple of years. And similarly, working with town staff to streamline the budgeting and accounting process so it's easier to understand and things are in a place that makes sense to people who don't spend their whole life looking at budgets. That going with that is we try to, we had things chopped up in a way a few years ago that had similar kinds of work in different places, treated in different ways. And we've tried to move things so that if it's maintenance, it shows a maintenance, for instance. If not necessarily cemetery maintenance or road maintenance, town buildings maintenance, but it's maintenance. And at the same time, we try to make sure we're maintaining accurate record keeping so that we can track and predict where we are and plan for the future. Yeah, we've had a dozen meetings and presentations with a variety of other town representatives, several with a select board, several with individuals from other boards and committees. We've had a lot of review and comment, or not as much as we'd like, but enough to be useful from the public boards and committees. And we've chucked, trumped through every department and division at least once and some of them two or three times. We've also worked through the five-year capital plan at some length. We are now, as you all know, since we're not having a regular hearing, in a very strange time. And the, right now, as best we know it and as best we can foresee the future, we're projecting that the municipal portion of the mill rate, it will be essentially flat, barring something happening worse than we expect. And my view of the future is as cloudy as anybody's.
Yes, thank you, Andy. Before we get into the budget presentation itself, this year we have a very major portion of the current budget, which is in process, which is municipal building projects, and we wanted Eric to give us an update.
Thanks, Bruce. So I am pleased to say that despite the adversity that we're dealing with currently, we were far enough along in the process that we are able to continue with that project. And we anticipated the library portion of that work will be done this fiscal year prior to June 30. Part of the reason for that is that when you're taking a roof off of the building, you want to do it before thunderstorms even, which usually starts in July, so we are working with the contractor to move that forward quickly. That piece is a smaller portion cost-wise of the whole project, but it's the first to be accomplished just by the way things are shaking out and out of necessity of this weather situation. The current budget includes an additional $100,000 in new revenue expenditures to fully complete this project. So that basically means that we have some additional revenue coming in through donations that we're accounting for. We also have use of undesigned and fund balance to create a bit of buffer for this project. The environment, when we put this on the bid was very strong for contractors, so the price was significantly more, you know, 10, 15% more than what we had anticipated, perhaps even 20%. Fortunately, we did have a buffer built into our original cost, but that was enough just to get the actual project completed without having any room for alternate proposals, change orders, or any other unforeseen type of situations. So we were able to move forward with the project to accept below bid, but it left us in a position where we did not feel we had sufficient reserves to be responsible in moving forward. So in this year's budget, FY21, we're including that extra money to to build that buffer and make sure we get the project that we want and that we can put for make sure the building one's done. So some of those little things as well are being addressed. The total cost of the project will now be $925,000, $975,000. So more than what we had hoped, but still attainable if we're able to realize the buffer that I'm expecting will be approved in June. So I will take any questions on that, if that's okay, Bruce?
I would like, yeah, there are questions from either the board's committees or the public. You can certainly call. Anyone? Okay, so I guess we're good at this point.
Bruce, this is Henry Whitmore. Just a question for Eric on that $975,000 figure, just seeking clarification. Is that the total cost of all municipal building projects update, including the library roof and the fire station expansion?
Yeah, so that's the, that $975 is, is, the way I would put it is that's the total cost of the library roof and the fire station and $75,000 in contingency costs.
Okay, thank you, Eric. That's all.
Good question. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to, we'll move on to the budget.
All right. Before I start, I'll say that this is probably one of the more boring budgets that I've had the pleasure of working on until, until recently. We actually saw very few real substantive changes to the operating budget, department by department. And that's actually something that I've been working for for four years now. I want to see stability in the budget. I know that the boards, the select board and the budget committee both also are looking for that same continuity, that same amount of reliability. So the fact that we have a budget with very little change overall, I think is a very positive thing. It shows that we are achieving some of those goals that Andy referenced, minimizing impacts, adding responsibilities, leveling things out. I think this is the first year where we've actually really fully achieved that. We do have a few small changes in this year's budget that, that I'll note that speak to a few of those other goals. But most of our budget changes this year are happening to capital spending and debt service and use of designated and undesigned funds. And those are the pieces that tend to move around and allow us to keep that budget very static. If we increase our borrowing, we would be decreasing our use of designated funds, for example. If we have a $500,000 bond coming through, this year we have 550 for that fire station project. The following year, we would not have that expense, we would not have that bond, so it tends to level out. So that's kind of my general overview of the budget as I see it, is that we've done a great job making it not very interesting. So I'll go through and talk about those little nuances, the little changes that that really matter at this point. And I'll start off with revenue highlights, and I will say that we have projected a one-half of 1% increase in our municipal valuation. And that would be our municipal valuation outside of revenue reductions or reductions for homestead exemption, which that program changed this year. So it used to be a $25,000 deduction. That was a lot we made. Now it's $25,000. So of our homestead properties, the total amount of exempt value went up by 20%. That comes back in on the other side, do a 75% national state of name, plus some other offsets. But our overall tax base, we do expect will increase, and that's been reflected in this budget. State revenue sharing is another major revenue stream. And that we projected to be up by $50,000 to $250,000. The state in February said that they were going to hand us $290,000, which would be a fantastic amount, save for the fact that we're probably not even going to get close to that with the current economic downturn. And from what I understand, and I want to thank Ellen for reaching out to her colleagues and friends in the state office that oversee these projections, there really is no certainty on their part on what that number will look like and what the impacts might be from this, the consequences of this economic downturn that we're looking at right now. So we did project conservatively, begin with, and later on in the budget discussion, we will talk about possibility of other changes. But right now, we're presenting the budget that has been developed and brought forward over the past several months and that was reviewed by both the budget committee and select board. So it's a good point in the discussion now for me to say that the numbers you're looking at are prior to any of this coronavirus happening, and so we'll need to take a look at that later. The use of designated funds is down by 112,000 and use of undesigned funds up by 99,000. So in that, we have a small reduction in our use of funds. And we've been trying to head that direction for a little bit. Keeping in mind that the goal of these fund balances is to keep enough in reserve to buffer against a situation like what we're facing right now and also to use them as a savings account so that we can run projects out of those accounts as opposed to taking a lot of tax revenue or borrowing. And really making sure that we have the flexibility to take the trap that we want to, whether it is borrowing, use of funds, or use of tax revenue. So the other item I have for highlights so far is the 20% increase in transportation fees. And this is something that we've been talking about in our budget meetings, select board meetings for six months now. I won't belabor it, but it's a real change. I'm incredibly pleased to see it continuing and coming to fruition. The revenue picture, as I said, hasn't changed a lot. We did see a fairly modest, but dollar-wise large increase in administration. That's where the state revenue sharing comes in play, also the increased tax revenue. And the other revenues that we projected to increase, I think we also have a $50,000 increase in motor vehicle registrations. That's also probably going to be affected, but we'll get to that later. The big thing here in red is the capital improvements. And there is always variability in there, but the reason we have this large drop is because last year in capital improvement revenues, we had that $550,000 bond coming through. That's not happening this year, so it doesn't show. These are the two graphs that I put together. I have one for a dollar change and percent change. And I'll say that where you see large dollar changes, usually it's a small percent. And vice versa, when it's a small percent, it's usually a little bit larger dollar. The two departments, administration, we see an increase there that was reflected in Scotts Runyon and the capital improvement. So this is just a graphic representation of what I had just discussed. And again, capital improvements is the only one that shows a percentage-wise really substantive change. Everything else is above what we'd expect and overall quite positive. It's allowed us to keep pace with increasing expenditures and have a very modest impact on the overall budget. This is a breakout of the administration department specifically, if we included. The administration department is our primary revenue stream, and so I like to break this out so folks can see what's happening in the individual categories. Sometimes I noted motor vehicles are looking quite healthy. Again, at the other side, the right-hand side, we have the undesigned and designated funds. Those are reflected as well. So again, there's a graphic representation in a little bit more detail of what's been discussed. Before I move on to fund balances, is that a good point to break?
Yes, it is.
Eric, I have a question on that last, this is Henry Whitmore. I've got a question on that last chart.
This one right here?
Yep. So I see an increase in motor vehicles revenue and increase in homestead exemption, real estate property taxes, and is that a result of increased list value, grand list value, or is it an increase in mill rate, or is it a combination of the two, especially for instance, motor vehicle taxes? Or is that a projection, or is that?
That's a, so motor vehicles is a projection, and that's actually based on prior year targets and actuals. So with motor vehicles and with most of these revenue accounts, we actually are about a year behind. So with the uncertainty of any financial picture, we expect things to increase, but we don't want to count on it. So motor vehicles, our estimates for FY21 are actually just about or a little bit less than what I think we'll actually realize for the current fiscal year. That might change everything right now, but that's just one example of how most of these accounts are actually based on prior year numbers. And we try not to be, we try to be very conservative in these numbers. You had another question about the homestead exemption and the tax revenues?
Well, I really was just looking at the larger increases on that, on that graphic there. And really, I'm wondering whether it's a function of an increase in the grand list or an increase in the mill rate, depending on which category we're looking at.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be an increase in the mill rate per se. These numbers reflect an education increase of 3%. If we were to back that out, there would not be an increase in the mill rate for, on the municipal side. Or if, there wouldn't be an increase, because that's the way we had, we had made sure it was a flat budget before any RSU, any RSU expenditures increases. There was the changes I noted with the homestead exemption. So the reason you see a big increase in the homestead exemption reimbursement is because the state basically took a bunch of money out of our tax base and then said, well, we're going to get it back to you 75% at least through this change in the formula for homestead exemption. So that, that's where the $70,000 comes from. And the increase to the tax base, that's more or less a result of the RSU. I think in that, and I get to this at the end of the presentation, just the way things work, I think the net increase for town spending that actually affects the tax rate or the tax base is around $16,000. So it's negligible and we could really at any point take a little bit of additional funds out of, out of the designated to offset that, but.
Okay, well, thank you, Eric. Yeah, appreciate you going over that. I just wanted to get some clarification there. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. No, that's a good question. I'm glad you're with us. I think there's two or three members of the public that dialed in. I saw Grace Keen as well, I think so. It's good to see folks calling in.
Great. So we'll go on to the, are there any other questions? Or comments from the boards and committee? Okay, we'll move on to, why don't you talk about the fund balances and then we'll again take after the fund balances and fund highlights. See if there's a pause for questions.
Sure, yeah. So we did talk about fund balance and fund balance use. I also, with these funds, project very conservatively. The blue lines at the bottom, they're annotated as CIA. That's carried forward. But really, the proper accounting term for those would be the designated funds. So these are the funds that we use primarily as a piggy bank for special projects. We have several hundred, probably $200,000, $300,000 in combined savings for road work in these designated funds, as well as fire equipment reserves. All those different categories that roughly correspond, and we're working very hard to make sure that they do in much greater, to a greater extent, funds that correspond with our capital accounts. So that's the blue line, that's the smaller of the two. And then we have the red lines, which are the undesigned funds. And these are the funds that are left over at the end of the year. And these are the funds that represent our two-troths baseline that we try to reach every year. So I'll go through just some notes I've already started on discussing, and then I'll go back to that graph if there's any questions. But we do have that two-troths goal for the undesigned funds. And our projections currently show that with the budget as it stands, and even with a little bit of extra capacity, we can easily meet that two-troths requirement for two-troths of our total operating budget, including the school expenditures. So we have a very healthy reserve still. The use of funds does contribute to the stability of the overall mill rate and the offset of capital expenditures. I talked some about that earlier. This is one of those things that really helps us maintain that balance. The current budget year balances are curtail. If you look back at this graph, you see that we have the 2019, kind of, oh, there's my mouse. This is the year that we have last year, that we know, that's the audited balance right there in 2019. And then '20 and '21, this is the current fiscal year, and this is the projected budget fiscal year. I don't know what's going to happen, so I always try to give a little bit of a draw just to say, worst-case scenario, are we going to meet that two-troths threshold? Are we going to have enough funds available to complete our projects? Moving on, the, I did talk about the use of fund balances designated and undesigned and the fact that there is that small decrease overall. But again, these numbers have actually flipped from last year, but our total use of fund balance is very similar to what it was, the two of those combined, to what it was last year.
And Eric expressed as a percentage basis of overall budget, what percentage would that carry forward or fund balance be?
The use of that, let me make a note of that. I'll probably go back to that because I have to leave the slideshow and look at my spreadsheet, but let me make a note.
Okay, thank you.
And here's what you put, a rough percentage of revenue for the use of those funds?
Well, as a percentage of the expense-side budget, perhaps?
Okay, yeah, I think we can do that.
And it would be interesting to see what the trends have been over, over sort of recent years, percentage of carryforward funds against the percentage of the expense-side budget.
That'll take some more time, but I can certainly show you the actual usage numbers over time as well.
Okay, thank you.
I like the idea of thinking about it that way. I hadn't thought about that kind of metric. Make sure I get back to that.
Great. All right. Are you all set with that? Are there any other questions or comments on fund highlights and fund balances and so forth from the public as well? And again, if you're watching a local access and you want to call in, please do that.
Bruce is ready to take your call. I feel like we should do a little tele.
Well, we're not selling jewelry like that. Eric, because you probably know better than I do, what is that number again?
651813.
651813. Good radio voice. Great. So the next few slides are going to deal with expenses. And I'm going to ask Eric to just hit the highlights of, that you will see on the slides. And actually, after, I think we're going to have about five slides on that, five or six slides. So after each slide, this will show two or three areas. We'll pause and see if there are any questions or discussion on that, either from the public or from board and committee members. So go ahead with the expense highlights for administration maintenance and boards and commissions.
Thanks, Bruce. So insurance, labor, and technology costs are up, and those are perennial. Every year we see increases largely due to inflation, cost of living, things like that, and our increasing use of small technology. And I have to say that I feel that we are in a tremendously good situation.
I can't put the number up unless you go off your screen. This is white.
Okay, all right. Thanks. We'll keep that in mind. Technology, it's been a lifesaver for us in this environment that we're currently, we're actually going to be able to have staff to be be, and in some cases, already working from home. Because we have laptops, we have PCs, and we have services that allow us to be flexible. So even our budget process, the fact that we're going to be able to continue, very positive that we have those technology assets in place. Increased assessing time and cost. Currently, we're two days a week with our assessor, we're moving to three, and the daily rate is going down. So that, I think, is a very positive thing. It's in preparation of our revaluation, which will be happening likely starting in FY2022. This fiscal year coming, we will doing an RFP and preparing for that revaluation. So we do need a little bit of assessing time to get that started. And I think we're getting a pretty good value out of our assessor, so. The other item I had for administration is that we do have additional $12,000 for legal fees. Again, this is a carryforward account, so if that money does not get spent, it will be put aside for a legal reserve. We had a hard couple of years here. I'm hoping that we'll be able to finally turn the bend and build up a small reserve, $40,000 or $50,000, and then return our costs for that division to something that's more reasonable. Maintenance, the department is up $10,000 overall, and this reflects increased focus on preventative maintenance and ongoing repair work to reduce the need for capital expenditures later on. And this is a pattern you'll see repeated throughout this year's budget is 5%, 10% increase where possible and where appropriate to increase and improve our maintenance regimen as our staff becomes more capable, as we have more equipment to achieve those goals. Boards and commissions, this has been functionally split up in the warrant. There's no real change to their overall numbers, but with that goal of keeping like things together, the boards and commissions departments included the planning board, the appeals board, and the conservation commission. And the only thing they had in common was the term board of commissioning title. So with the warrant, we'll be splitting that up and having a planning board and appeals put with the other administrative functions, code enforcement and assessing, which I think is appropriate. And also, the conservation commission will be grouped with trails, recreation, town properties, and other similar services. So that's the slide.
Great. And again, that just really represents trying to put common things together and place that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Exactly. This will allow us in the long run to do more oranges to oranges and apples to apples comparisons as we go down the road. And that's getting, I think, easier every single year because we've made some larger moves a couple of years ago. So we do want to see if there are any questions, comments from board and committee members or the public. And if you do contact us, just give us your name first as a resident on administration maintenance or the boards and commissions. We've just kind of given you an overall highlight here. Okay, we'll move on to the next slide.
Community service, recreation parks, and activities. We do have $2,000 increase to animal control, and that is almost exclusively due to. We do have a $2,000 increase to animal control. That is almost exclusively due to increased costs for the Quebec Valley Humane Society. I had a call from the Hollowell Town Manager who's on the board of directors for that organization. Saying, check your mail. I want to make sure you understand and okay with the increase. And I said, Nick, you know, this is an easy decision, but the value that we get from that service, the PDHS. We don't even come close to covering the cost of shelter. We pay a portion of it. And a lot of community donation, individuals donate to that. So I said, I'd be happy to explain this and present it to the budget committee and select board. And it's a wonderful service, so I am very happy to see that increase. So they can continue to provide the level of service to those animals that they deserve. Recreation parks and activities, we have an increase of $4,000. That is for the beach, or at least in the beach line, I should say. And that's to improve the facilities in line with the overall goal of making that beach much more of a public place. Making it more attractive, more usable and more user friendly. Half of that, $4,000 is going to go towards the installation of utilities. Down at that building that's there, that building in the long term I hope will be replaced. But right now it doesn't even have electricity. So the functionality of that building and the future use of that space are limited by things like basic infrastructure needs. So we're trying to push that and improve that facility. The next item I want to talk about is the rec board. And that includes things like youth sports. They do have a $5,000, almost $6,000 increase. Forty-five hundred of that is for swim lessons at the beach, which we're hoping we can continue to do. There's still uncertainty. We got an email from the Red Cross about how their program is going to roll out in the summer. But right now, we're actually working with the Y and we're very close, we were very close to having an agreement with them to provide that service. So we are planning and building to make sure that happens. The other item that the rec board is working on is they have repairs, seating and pen long for their, the ball field of the fairgrounds. So those two things contribute to that increase. Obviously there's reduction someplace else in the budget that minimizes that impact. Also with both of these, beach and the rec board. It's important to note that they have offsetting revenues for the majority of those expenses. The last item is a $5,000 reduction in heritage days. That was twice, or every other year event with a cost of $10,000 last year. That got converted to a single every year event and the budget was halved. And I think that we're going to be able to reach that goal. And I want to thank Dennis for his work to really bring that to fruition. And to prove last year that they could run a very good heritage days for less than, less than $5,000. Do you want to give Dennis a chance to plug or are we going to?
Well, Dennis Lauren, I take a chance to plug, I'm sure. So the, we're going to take questions and comments on the community services and the recreation parks and activities. We will be talking at, in the next public hearing about the warrant itself. How we package things together and ask questions. And there actually will be a related question to the use of the beach. So some of this is kind of looking forward to how we might want to have that beach publicly used. Within the scope of rebuild, rebuild offerings, if you will, to the public. So we're open for questions and comments from the public or the boards, the board and committee. Well, Dennis, did you want to say something about heritage days?
It's exciting. We're still planning on having it August seven, eight, nine.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on then to protection, which is a large category for us, and cemeteries.
Great. The fire department budget is flat. They were very good about recognizing the impact that a major capital investment has on the budget and on the community. And so they, this year did put forward a flat budget and absorbing increases within their prior year budgets. So that's wonderful to see and I appreciate it. I think I'll do as well. Dispatching ambulance costs are up. Dispatching is up moderately. Ambulance costs are up about 20% and they're going to be up again another 20% next year. And we've had discussions with the winter ambulance service who provides that for us. About how Y and they did give me a very good explanation about why we were seeing such a large increase. Excuse me, and it had a lot to do with how they were billing and the fact that they were having increasing amounts of unbillable runs. So they're just passing along those costs of a solvent operation to us. Prograded, of course, for our share of the calls and population and all those other factors.
What's an unbillable run?
That would be a service that they can't collect from the individual or from the insurance company. And I think it's a mixture. They're hoping that the expansion of daycare will help with that somewhat. But it's uncertain because daycare also has a fairly low rate of billing or payment for those types of services anyway. But we'll see what happens. Tower sites, we have seen that division have an increase. Or almost every year there's more money spent in those budgets. So based on the experience there, we've added more funds to make sure that we don't get caught short again. Moving on to cemeteries, we had an increase here of $5,000, but that's offset by the use of trust funds. And I would more or less classify that as a special project this year. And the budget primarily covers materials and contract work. So it's a pretty straightforward and simple budget. But it does take a lot of working time. I know the committee puts a lot of time into making sure that. They're very deliberate and thoughtful about how that money is spent. Andy, while you're very funny, did you?
I mean, we're trying to maintain our historic cemeteries and particularly the stone work in them. And this is partly a project to make sure that we can continue to do that. That we can respect the folks who are buried there by keeping their tombstones upright and legible.
Thanks. So we're at a break on both protection and cemeteries. Are there any comments or questions? And again, that's either from the public or from everybody who's joined us from boards and the board and the budget committee. I'm going to give a little bit more of a pregnant pause in a couple of these, make sure. I will move on then to Rosen, drainage and capital improvements.
All right. So as I mentioned, you do have an increase in maintenance costs here. We're trying to up what we spend on ditching and cobwebs this year as well as. Tree work, brush and tree work. We've seen an increasing need. And this fall, we actually had a pretty good run, this fall, winter. With tree cutting on South Road and Chase Road at Thunder Castle to really help clear that canyon back. So we put a lot of money into the roads over the past decade. And we're continuing to have maintenance painting on a regular schedule. However, asphalt doesn't grow but trees do. So we need to make sure that we keep that buffer space around our asset clear so we can protect it. The winter roads contract has been this last year. This year we have a 2% increase. That's based on CPI. It may be less than that. Likely will be, but we may need to have a discussion at some point about what's going to be contracted. If this goes negative, I would have to talk to the board about it. But we'll get to that if we do. With respect to capital improvements, we do have a reduction from last year's high. Which included that municipal buildings project. But we are still proceeding with several projects this year. And all of these projects and expenditures are supported by the five-year plan. The capital improvements continue here. I just took some liberty there to.
Not at all.
We have $20,000 to support ADA improvements at Guy Hall. By the end of April, we should have our automatic door openers ready. I wish we'd gone a little month sooner because then we could be hitting the doors with our elbows on the way in. But this is going to be a fantastic improvement to this facility to really bring us forward into the second year of our three-year plan. And to bring the building to full ADA compliance. Next would be restrooms, accessible restrooms. And then the final year would be changes to the grade of the parking lot up front. In conjunction with lot paving to really finalize that whole plan. Paving infrastructure work for FY 21 includes $293,500 worth of work, which is a sizable chunk of that department. We're planning on paving Plains Road. We are looking to repair the Torsey Pond Bridge. The dam is being taken care of by the Torsey Pond Dam Association, excuse me, Torsey Pond Lake. Torsey Pond Association. Don't tell Darcy I screwed that up. The Torsey Pond Association. And we will, we're working with them to share costs on some components of that project. The last item is the salt sand shed building repair. That does the major work or repair. We had put it up to bid this year, but unfortunately the costs keep in about 150 to 200% of what we thought was reasonable. And so we decided to hold off on that during the next, during this next fiscal year. We'll be putting out an RFP that will be a repair or replace. So we will give contractors the option of proposing costs for one or both of those. And that will give us a place to start as far as what to do with that decision. The next item will be $75,000 contingency for the town buildings project. Plus the reappraisal of some funds that were on spec this fiscal year. As well as additional, appropriating additional donations. And the last item I want to talk about in capital is the leasing and reserve savings at the transfer station. We do that every year and that account is actually benefited by contributions from our two partner talents. And this, this one does need adjustment due to the fact that we have that failure at a transfer station. And we want to be replacing the compactor this year as opposed to next. Because the revenues are offset and there's no real harm in the state of affairs. But I will be putting forward a more accurate number for the select board to consider next week when they look at this budget. And I believe that is everything for capital. So we'll go back to roads and drainage capital.
Great. Questions from the public? The phone number is?
Six eight five eighteen thirteen.
Eighteen thirteen or anybody else who's on the screen with us? Great. We'll move on to just, I guess, summary, coming it up with the expense highlights and the expense summary. And then you probably want to follow that with your change by department and so forth. So let's go ahead and do the final summary and then we'll just follow with that information.
Great. So the last four departments that we look at would be solid ways. We have a 4% increase in operating budget. Again, facilities maintenance is a priority. County tax, we're looking at about a 3% increase to that. That is an estimate. We don't have a file for that at this point. Debt service, we do have a small reduction in the bond payments that are existing. However, we do have the principal payments and interest coming online for the municipal building project. So that results in an increase of 7% for that, for that department. But it's a good 7% and I'll talk about that later. And the last item is unclassified and that department is essentially flat. So did you want to take questions?
If there are any questions on that, on the county tax, I guess I'll just ask a quick, well, for clarification. When we break out the mill rate, we actually break out what the county portion of that is. So we don't have any control over that. And so we have free taxing authorities that share our mailing of your tax bill. And we're primarily addressing here tonight, of course, is the municipal budget. But there is also the taxing authority of the county and the taxing authority of the school RSU. And that's what makes up the total mill rate. So with that said, any questions on those last four pieces? Okay, great. We'll move on to the expense summary and the slides that illustrate, if you will, some of the changes by department.
Great. I won't run through this. The categories that I mentioned earlier do stick out. Capital expenditures and everything else, just a small increase or, or a small law increase depending. And overall, we are down 4.6% for the municipal expenditure. Again, revenues are also down and the bond for the capital projects being the driving factor behind all of those things. Graphic representation by dollar amount. Percent as well. And again, nothing, nothing real exciting there. And then we have debt service and I did put a star by our current fiscal year or by the projected fiscal year, excuse me. So even though we have a 7% increase this projected budget year FY 21. We have a lot of capacity that will be created in the future so that we can borrow. And there's strong indication that we shouldn't be borrowing. And if interest rates look the way they do or the way we expect them to next year. I will likely be putting forward a fairly large recommendation for municipal borrowing. To cover municipal projects, paving, to take advantage of some of those, of those rates for the FY coming to fiscal year. So just because that capacity is there doesn't mean that we shouldn't move some projects up and take advantage of things that we have an opportunity to do so. Municipal budget highlights, I can go through these pretty quickly. And I think Dennis, Bruce can take over again. The budget municipal expenses decreased by $433,000. That's that 4.3% that we were looking at. And the total are 2.8 million. And the, to Henry's question earlier. We were looking at about 120 and about 99, so we're 225,000, let's just say. In revenues from designated and undesigned funds. So that's about, is that 200, about 10%, something like that, a little bit less, 9% say. Of the overall budget for use of funds. The budget of municipal revenue outside of projects. You're welcome, yeah. Budget revenue outside of property tax also decreased. Again, things are floating, things are matching up. And that is why we were able to keep the mill rate, the municipal mill rate essentially flat. And have that desirable outcome we're looking for. The net municipal impact is again about $16,000, very modest. And something that we, I'm quite proud of anyway. The municipal portion of the mill rate went from about 3.55 to 3.6 mills. So just a nickel and that's on a roughly 19.99 mill rate. Assuming a 3% increase from the school. Again, if not for that, we'd be at the same 19.55 we were at this year. And the municipal portion of the mill rate, getting to Bruce's question, about 18% of the property tax bill you receive is for municipal services. The school information is available at lernica.org/budget/budget. And they are looking at somewhere between a 2% and 6% increase. We hope and expect that they will be closer to the lower end of that scale. But that's one of the signs and then the two. Tell you, in either case or any case. I'll view, uh, in either case, uh, or any case, uh, they will be somewhere between seventy-five and seventy-eight percent of the tax bill. Uh, with our current projection, we got seventy-six percent of your tax bill. And the county uh will see a slight slight increase and uh fall at about six percent of the property tax bill. Uh, and um, I guess I could take uh, a pause and let Bruce ask his question.
Um, first of all, I I would say, um, no, I don't actually have any further questions. Um, but if there are questions, please do chime in. Uh, board members of the select, select board members did attend uh an invitational meeting of all the town select boards in joint session with the RSU. Um, and uh, the RSU put out a very aggressive um, budget uh management, if you will, of a target of around two percent. Um, the first numbers we have seen from them were about a five point five percent. I understand that they have been working on that as well. I have had a conversation um, uh, with 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 the RSU of about the direction that they're going in. Uh, they expect stay on task and on time and and join us in the referendum uh on June sixth, hopefully nothing derails due to the coronavirus and this particular process. That's always a a possibility. I do know their plate is extremely full with students dispersed and teachers dispersed and they are still paying staff because that's mandated, um, well, professional staff, they certainly are, but the hourly staff is also getting paid in, in the long run, that's a good thing for our communities that uh, that these individuals are being paid. So I, I do expect them to be on the the lower end of the target range uh that they they're working with and much closer to the two and three percent range. Um, so I think we're using good numbers in that area. Um, and I very specifically asked that uh at at the meeting itself, so. Uh, I always seek clarification when I see something that's a little bit rosy like that, um, but they seem to be diligently working towards that. Um, at this point, uh, this is a just um, a good point to begin the discussion, the budget uh as a whole and any specific questions that there might be or specific comments as well. So again, we can have people call in. I certainly would like to hear from any committee members or board members um, or any discussion amongst yourselves uh in reference to um, this uh, this budget as presented. Let's go ahead and see how Zoom works for us.
I have a question, Bruce. This is Catherine.
Thank you.
Uh, I saw, uh, maybe it's for Eric, but I saw that you had changed the uh school budget number down to three percent about a week ago. Is that based on our hope that it will go there or has there been some work done by the school committee?
Um, it's actually based on the twisting Eric's arm a little bit. Um, so I'll be quite frank about it. I had um, some additional conversations um, with the RSU, um, and uh, I think they will be achieving very close to that target. Um, you might perhaps put me in the wishful thinking category, but I actually don't think I am. Uh, so that last revision stands there again. We actually don't have any final control uh as to how things will will break out for them. They may have a larger, we don't know this, but there may be some things that they're not paying for right now in the areas of fuel, running buses and so on and so forth, that may change their overlay and that may also factor into their calculations. They haven't said that or anything like that. That's just from having served years ago on the school board. I can certainly see that there may be some um, maybe some flexibility in what they can do with overlay.
Eric, what did you just do there so we can have a talk? Yes, yeah. Um, before I get back, I just want to, once we quit the left, last slide about important dates, uh, and then I'll jump right back to the the main screen. April first, one twenty, uh, that is the deadline for the homes to exemption. Uh, this year it is worth five hundred dollars thanks to the state of Maine. Uh, and um, uh, we're, we're glad to see that. It's going to help a lot of residents out. Uh, it's actually going to mitigate uh much of the impact of of the school increase. Uh, so that folks that are having a hundred fifty-dollar increase in the tax bill uh could be as little as fifty dollars or or less. Um, and a lot of that is due to that home store exemption change for folks to have it. Um, April tenth, nomination papers and warrants uh, um, are due to the town clerk. May seventh, final public budget hearing uh and meeting, uh, and we'll be having a similar format um to this, although again, we're much more focused on the uh, warrant proper, uh, the articles and the ordinances that are contained therein. Uh, May, uh, we have absentee municipal ballots available, uh, and I'm really happy with this uh sequencing. In the past, we've had uh situations where the ballots came out before we even had the final hearing. Uh, and we've finally backed the whole budget process up enough for two months uh before town meeting that we're actually able to have that final hearing before the ballots go out so that we won't have anybody voting without at least the opportunity to uh hear one more time what this is all about. Uh, and then June ninth, twenty twenty is our town meeting secret ballot. Um, so important things to remember. Uh, and with that, I will um, uh, ditch the the screen and uh give this back to everybody else.
Great. Eric, I have two things, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
Uh, I I just, number one, I want to say that I really appreciate the effort for uh Jay Shret and all of the folks uh on this uh school board. Uh, I I'd want that to be a matter of public record. Uh, I think they have done a great job with uh try, understanding the responsibility and the uh sort of what they have invested in and what the towns have invested in uh those facilities, and I I was very happy to see that those numbers were uh, sort of manageable, and so I I want to say thank you for that. The other question I have is, I am running reelection on the select board and I wonder about getting my signatures by April tenth. So if someone else is going to take out papers, what might you suggest to them?
Uh, I would suggest um that uh, right now, the the state has not made any changes to those deadlines. Uh, if I was to give tips, I would say uh, just as always, uh, the transfer station is a fantastic place uh to collect signatures uh with appropriate social distancing. Um, uh, but um, neighbor to neighbor, I think, could be done as well. Uh, we, we are still um, uh, in an environment where um, i- if people are responsible and maintain that distance uh and use proper uh, uh, incline, uh, hygiene and all that. Um, uh, that we can still get some of these things done, but unfortunately, there hasn't been no change to the statutory deadlines. So um, I would say good luck and start early uh if you plan on doing that.
Hi, uh, this is Marty Hennis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Uh, I wanted to follow up on the question that Catherine asked about the school budget and how the endemic or pandemic is affecting the school, the school budgeting. Uh, it's also going to affect the municipal side of the budget. Uh, the new budget goes into effect uh in just three months, April, May, June, yeah, three months. And there are areas that I think need to be looked at um, in terms of the probable impacts, you know, such as uh, our projecting an increase in investment income. And then, you know, to look at what portion of our assets are invested short-term with and in government bonds that we might purchase, uh, because the rates are down very, very low. Uh, just one example, I don't want to, you know, make a long speech about it, but uh, other areas, revenue areas in the budget could be very adversely affected. And um, I think there should be discussion about whether we factor that into the budget or whether we just uh assure uh, uh, the town people that we have a plan for adapting to it. If, say, August, September, October, we begin to see that, hey, we're, we're not going to get all that, all that revenue because of what's happening to the economy and what are we going to do to adjust to it? Or alternatively, do we adjust to that now and be more pessimistic in the budget? You know, and then restore things to the budget if things turn out to be better.
I'd like to, I'd like to piggyback on that before you answer, Bruce. Um, it, Marty, I'm wondering if we need to look at what may happen in these next three months also um, with revenue projections at least and factoring that in as well to the answer, Bruce. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, a- actually, that was going to be the last piece of tonight's agenda. Um, I wanted to review the budget that has been proposed and um, has gone through the process. But we really do need to be extremely mindful of um, both uh, of what was brought up by by both of you, probably on everybody's mind to some uh great extent. Um, so we can either go into that discussion now as part of that, or we can kind of wrap up the discussion on the budget as it's presented. Um, to make sure that we feel it's a responsible budget uh as presented and then talk about what we might do with it to alter it, if you will, or to use some other tool to move towards that end uh, that has sort of been suggested or at least approached. How would you like to, how would the boards like to proceed with that discussion?
I'd like to make one more comment on the current budget.
Sure.
Um, in response to Dennis, uh, Eric, when do nomination papers become available to be taken out?
Uh, they're available now.
Okay, and you mentioned that the transfer station is a good place to get signatures, which it is. Uh, but I'd just like to remind the public that it uh, during the past year, we changed the location where people can do that so that you are not in the traffic areas. And it's in that uh, can you describe where that loop is for folks?
Yeah, sure. So when you come in uh to the transfer station, uh, you bear rights to go around the loop. Um, you could also, um, if you were uh going against traffic, uh, go straight down through. Um, and the best way to envision it is without Y is with traffic exiting and traffic coming in split. Uh, there's an arc uh in there, uh, and that is where the um, folks can be. Uh, and it actually works out very well for the social distancing environment, uh, because you are way out of um, the 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 main happening facility. So uh, basically, if you were to to be prepared to leave the facility and uh turn left instead of going straight out, uh, that's also how you'd access that um, uh, that location.
Bring a card table. Sixty wide, perfect.
And a big sign.
Yeah, and I, and I, the only other thing I would recommend to uh anybody who's collecting signatures um would be to um, probably call people ahead of time. So all the best to you. Are there other uh pieces of discussion, if you will, on the current budget as presented?
Are you talking about the twenty-one budget? Is that what you're asking?
The FY twenty-one budget, yeah.
Okay.
The presentation that we just went through.
Okay, I, current to me means FY twenty, so, okay. Um, so this is Ellen, and I think you know, when, when we were talking last week and it looked like we had put the budget to bed for the most part, that it was a great budget. Um, and after I left, I thought it wasn't such a great budget. And I, I wrote to my colleagues on the budget committee over the weekend and I don't, I would have to say, I don't think it's responsible to let the budget go forward in the manner that you saw it presented this evening, not because of anything that we were neglectful about, but because that the situation is changing so rapidly around us. And I think that the revenue, there's going to be revenue impact. Um, and I think there's going to be some expense impact of the situation that we should we should reflect in the budget as per, the budget that we propose to the voters. And you, you got to take my comments with a grain of salt, though, because I'm a very conservative budgeter. So you can just understand that from where I'm coming from. But I know that the state is going to be adjusting revenues downward. Um, and I've had a discussion with the chair of the Revenue Forecasting Committee. He said this is going to make two thousand eight look like a walk in the park. Um, and suggested, you know, that that's going to be their starting point for looking at state revenues and they'll adjust downward from there. Um, I also talked to the chair of the Consensus Economic Forecasting Committee and they're going to be coming back in to make a, an adjustment downward in revenue. So when the state revenues go down, that trickles down. Um, there'll be a lot of federal money flowing in. Um, you know, for education and health and all kinds of things, businesses and whatnot. Um, but I'm not, they are not going to immunize us in the vernacular of the day from the impact um, that the pandemic is going to have on our town and any other town around us.
Thank you. Other comments? Uh, and that, I think we're getting into that discussion.
Bruce?
Yes.
Let me throw out, uh, to echo Ellen's sentiments, uh, I, I think we really need to be skeptical about state revenue projections, even though we were initially very cautious about uh, about budgeting uh less than the uh projected amount that uh for our, for our mainstream revenue lines from them. Uh, because we just don't know, and uh, I, I have a sneaking suspicion that uh, when, when their revenues decline, obviously municipal revenues will decline uh as well. I'm not so much worried about interest income from our reserves because the rates are about as low as they can get unless they go into negative numbers. Uh, so I I suspect that those projections based on our reserves are, are somewhat realistic. But I, I honestly don't know how we, how we plan on uh, you know, on on a reliable revenue stream from the state, given the fact the state uh is out front of us. And uh, if they don't get the revenue, we're not going to get it either.
Other comments?
Uh, I think everything that's been said is is absolutely right. Uh, there are, I, I can think of two broad ways of approaching the budget. And both begin with making our best um swags about the impact on revenues and expenses. And then one, one track is to uh modify the draft budget, uh, both on the revenue and expense side based on our assumptions about the economy um and the demands that the town may be facing. Uh, and then from there, you can either reduce revenues, possibly increase expenses and increase the mill rate. Or you can take a look at our, 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 our fund balance, our undesignated fund balance and do what the federal government is doing. Uh, you know, in, well, they don't have a fund balance anymore for decades, but you know, to uh, consider uh exposing more of the undesignated fund balance to potential use to balance the budget. Uh, one thing I would, I would hope that we can consider is that the last thing that our residents are going to need in the next eighteen months uh is um, an increase in their, in their property tax. Uh, there undoubtedly will be residents in Reed Field that are going to be existing on that, you know, allowance that the federal government is talking about providing. That, you know, that their businesses may have to be closed, they may be furloughed from their jobs. And I, I, I think we should, we need to shield, you know, we need to consider more than ever um, the impact of an increase in property tax. How that would, how that would affect some, some of our residents. So I guess what I'm saying is I would, I would follow the So I guess what I'm saying is I would, I would follow the track of modifying the budget based on our our best estimates. Which, you know, are not founded in a great deal of information. And then just exposing more of the undesigned funds balance to potential use.
Other comments, questions or discussion in regard to that? I have sort of a.
Bruce, this is, this is Henry Whitmore again, sort of a general public question here for the Budget Committee. I agree with everything that I've heard Marty and Ellen and others say. What do we think maybe the variance the budget would be on either the expense or the revenue side? And and are we, what sort of magnitude are we talking about? And we think that the nine percent, nine percent. Undesignated fund balance is sufficient to cover that, or are we going to have to go hunting elsewhere? I'm really asking the question, what do we think the variance to budget might be? The budget as presented tonight, that's all.
Yeah, Henry, I think that's that's the critical first question. You know, are we talking about? A hundred thousand dollar impact, a five hundred thousand dollar, a million dollar impact on our revenues? We have, we have so little to go on today, but we have to, we have to make assumptions. And 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 go on those assumptions. And I I don't think anybody could just toss out a number with any great deal of confidence this minute. I think we're going to, you know, have to look at the, look at everything, look at every every element of the budget. And say, how how far could that conceivably go bad?
Right, so I would, I would offer that perhaps a five or ten percent variances is not a disaster, but that a forty or fifty percent variance would be. A disaster.
Yeah, this is Ellen. I don't think it's going to be a forty or fifty percent variance and. Here's a question to Bruce. Are we going to go through the alternative scenario that Eric pulled together?
I think, I think we should.
That was my question also.
Yeah, and I think we should also go through my alternative offering as well.
Okay.
Which went out in email, which I believe everyone receives, but I can also pop that onto the screen when I get there.
Bruce?
Yes.
Can Eric display that so that we can all see it on the screen and the public could also?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, so.
I'd like to make a comment before we get into that. Eric, your model was driven primarily by taking a look at some two thousand eight history, is that correct?
Revenues.
Revenue is.
Two thousand seven through two thousand eleven.
So, so that's kind of, that's that's where Eric started. There are two things I want to address. First of all, I think Marty's or whoever, and I may be mixing up people's input at this point. And I I apologize for that. We don't know if this is a one or a five or a ten or fifteen or a thirty percent impact, a possibility. Some of the kinds of things we're seeing happening are are enormous in scope. The unemployment first time claims went from, if you look from nineteen sixty-seven. On to today, this week, they averaged somewhere around. They didn't even average a million, but there were a few peaks that approached a million filings. Three million filings, well over three million filings this last week. So the impact is is going to be enormous. We're not, we are property tax driven in this town. And we're not pulling a lot of revenue from a a strip of businesses that are going to go out and shutter or anything of that nature. That doesn't mean we shouldn't recognize that and and deal with. Looking at things with the mill rate. I will tell you that if we made a five or ten percent adjustment. In municipal spending, remember we're eighteen percent of that mill rate. That we may only bring that down a few cents. So we need to be talking, and I don't mean we necessarily, but. The people who participate in hearings and so forth do need to attend budget hearings. For the RSU and express any concerns or input there or for us as well. So the the tool I'm going to offer, and I'm going to let Eric go first, however, is. To increase authority to deal with budgetary matters. In two thousand and twenty and twenty-one. So again, with the same goal, but to say since we can't predict what will be needed in terms of. And and I can assure you, whatever we adjust to will be, I believe, ultimately incorrect.
Certainly.
I just think it's, there's so much uncertainty that I don't think we can win that lottery. And, you know, we we don't know, for example, perhaps schools will. Will obtain money that will somehow affect us in a positive way, but we don't know that at this point. The next, and I think unfortunately, by the time we get to June ninth, we really actually won't know the rollout economic effects. So whatever decisions we make now will always be a moving target. So what I want to be able to do is figure out how we can. Deal with authority, if you will. The, getting the ability to deal with a moving target. And I would be proposing some warrant language to do that. But let's talk about Eric's. Information first.
Yes.
Which is.
Thank you.
Budget version nine, right?
Yep. So I'll, I'll do a little screen share just to show a little bit of background on that and then quickly get into the discussion of what. What that might look like. The best thing that we can do is is look back at that recession from two thousand eight to two thousand ten, eleven, somewhere in that range. And so what I started doing, here's Bruce's warrant article. I brought that on. We can look at that. Little bit, so I wanted to open up. This. So Marty, you had asked about. Revenues and what, you know, what, where we were starting. I did look at the, our main revenue categories for two thousand seven through two thousand eleven. And I highlighted the ones that I identified as being substantive and also having a little bit of a trend to them. We have a lot of revenue streams outside of tax revenue that is quite variable and actually even in this period. Was quite variable. Just looked at a couple of key, key numbers. I looked at the motor vehicles. And really, the two thousand seven, two thousand nine, it was actually a two-year drop. It was a kind of a gradual falling off. And that, I think, most accounts are that we're going to have a much harder landing this time around. But I did start off with that rough level of 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 loss. For some of our, again, non-tax accounts. We saw similar patterns for investment income drops drastically. It was like a seventy-five percent reduction. So that is an important one to consider. It's also though, a fairly small dollar value, so that that's actually. I think beneficial for us at this point. I took a look at the solid waste revenues, land use, permit fees, things like that. And did just try to come up with some rough, rough numbers. I'd say overall. What I tried to do was take the first year numbers that we had from two thousand seven and then average two thousand nine through two thousand eleven. And look at the relative difference between those two and try to get some. Smoothness because there's, there's a lot of rough edges in these numbers. And what I saw was roughly a five, I'd say a five percent reduction in our non-tax revenue. So as Bruce pointed out. We're so heavily reliant on that tax base that the rest of the stuff. It makes a big difference for us from a municipal perspective because those accrue to the municipal side of the equation. But they don't necessarily amount to a large percent impact. And so. This is what I did to come forward with that. Budget recommendation or or projection, whatever you want to call it, in in shoot nine. Which I'll, I'll open up now and I can just say that what I saw in those averages for the. Two thousand nine, two thousand eight recession are reflected where possible and where I thought appropriate in that budget. Budget draft nine. Listen, most of. Need to fix a printer for some reason. I don't know what's up with this, but. I'll make it go away if I can. So this was the coronavirus. Response, if you will. And I don't know where we want to focus. Other than to say that. Those revenue lines that, actually, I'll start with the expense side because that's a sheet I'm on. I saw two areas where we might want to adjust expenses. Outside of taking change that would actually reduce our expenditures. When I was looking at the revenue side, I did pretty clearly see and had Ellen pointed out as well rightly, that there are two areas that. Really need to be focused on with revenue if we're going to look at this in this way. And those would be. The overlay and. General assistance categories. And I just took a shot in the dark and said we probably want to at least double, double those. Right now, we have a twenty thousand dollar overlay, which is a very small percentage of our. Of our overall expenditure. And many towns do carry a larger buffer in that category. We've been fortunate and we've done a good job of not needing it, but if we are typically issuing ten or fifteen thousand dollars in abatements. In a year, the idea that we might go up to forty or fifty as a result of this downturn is not unreasonable. Again, it's just a guess. And the same thing with general assistance. Doubling that seems like at least a start. On the revenue side, I did, and again, these these yellow numbers represent areas where adjustments were made. To bring those estimates down. Sorry, this is a very small picture on the screen. There's not really a good way to. Make it larger without. Without losing some of the.
Excuse me, Eric. It's Catherine. It's coming through fine for me, so I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay, then I'll, I'll try to increase it just a little bit and see if that helps, but I'll say I'll have a hard time reading on the screen, so. Again, most of the impacts were in the administration side, although there might be impacts to the recreation. Youth sports, things like that. It didn't seem substantive enough to spend a lot of time on. And typically, those are balancing, so the revenues and expenses balance. So. I think that we're safe with those categories. I got focused on the administrative side. Reduced things, investment income, revenue sharing, that actually shows an increase. But it's a much, much smaller increase than what would have been projected otherwise. And I will say, back to my original point about a lot of these revenue lines, we're a year behind to begin with. So. What I'm looking at here is about a thirty percent reduction in what the state had originally said in February, they were going to build provide for revenue. So whether or not that's right, I'm not sure we have. Time to really figure this stuff out. And that's why I do think that the solution that Bruce is looking at. Perhaps in conjunction with a few changes to the existing budget makes a lot of sense because it gives us flexibility to adapt. Other areas that we had changed, solid waste, motor vehicles, boat excise tax, the things that you would expect. And and then the plumbing fees, land use fees, those did see a sharp drop and those are reflected here. And then the use of designated funds, that actually increased significantly. Because that's how in order to keep the mill rate static, we, that's the only source I could really identify. That I thought was responsible. We could start pulling more money out of the reserves for roads and things like that, but. A lot invested in that at this point, so I didn't take that tack. But, so this does reflect those revenue reductions, the mill rates under those circumstances. With that heavy increased use of the designated fund. Does stay at that nineteen ninety-nine that also includes that three percent full increase. So I took a shot at it and again, what we did see is is a sizable increase in the use of the. Undesignated funds to to account for that ninety-nine thousand dollar increase from what we had last year. So. That was my very short attempt at trying to account for some of this stuff and I'll leave it there.
Yeah, we would have to probably workshop through this budget fairly quickly. Normally, I believe the select board considers the budget on March thirtieth, is that correct?
Yeah, we're scheduled for Monday to consider the final draft. And then we have about two weeks before it has to begin.
Okay, so there's some, there's some workshop available to to do that. Depending on how fine we want to be with the scalpel. The mill rate ends up in basically the same place. But that's not what we thought the relief would be, a new balance, if you will, of expenses and revenues. So I'm not sure if I can share from here. I have that as well.
Yeah.
But you can go ahead.
I got a right, right up a bit of point here, so.
So this, this budget nine is in in my mind like a provisional budget. And I do think we should go ahead and take a look at that. Some of the moves we might make to try to soften. The budget a little bit so it can go ahead and. At least show some, some changes in. In a very initial guess for our virus effect. So this warrant was written, warrant question, shall the town vote to authorize the select board to make a emergency expenditure? Reductions if necessary, transfers on the unassigned fund balance. Quote, I mean, parentheses, general fund, up to twenty-five percent pursuant as necessary to meet. Projected revenue shortfalls due to the coronavirus urgency to the extent authorized by state law during ensuing fiscal year. I think the responsible way of addressing this would be with a warrant question, giving the select board. That authority, but at the same time, talking a little bit about and showing, if you will, a. An alternate budget that probably would be the basis for making some of these decisions. What I wanted to do with this particular warrant article and has been legally reviewed, but not what I would call legally final reviewed. In other words, it's been given to our law firm and they've said, yes, you can ask that question. As a matter of fact, they were the folks that said you got to put a cap in someplace. So that was some good advice. Because they said you really wouldn't want the public just to authorize you to be able to spend down the unassigned fund balance completely. So it's had some preliminary review. It's asking for trust, if you will, from the public. I mean, that's what it all boils down to. With with this approach. Having the cuts in mind, if you will, to take care of a budget swing that might be in the single percent numbers. But I think it would also give us the ability, if you will, to. Not go through the budget with a scalpel to the extent that doesn't really make sense. It may be a better decision, and I don't like this kind of decision, but it may be a better decision to say, we're not going to pay in two thousand and twenty and twenty-one. For example, that we've seen. An eighteen percent drop off, that's the number we need to to do in terms of an expense cut bracket. With some unassigned fund balance changes to accomplish keeping things flat. In terms of impact in the community. So that's what I would offer.
You know, that's sort of a third way of going from the two that I was tossing out. I think it's not a bad, not a bad idea. Well, first of all, just in the wording of the of that warrant. Does the twenty-five percent refer to the maximum transfer from fund balance? Or does it also? Or does it also refer to the reduction in expenses?
That's a good question. It was met and was written with the idea that would be the maximum transfer from fund balance and that. And so there may be a clarification in terms of, we may need to rewrite, recraft that budget or article to address expenses because we might, instead of saying, we can only make a 25% reduction in any one budget line, we may say, we're canceling a road project or we're canceling this. Or we're raising general assistance by $20,000 because that's what's needed and we're going to offset that someplace else. Those are big moves. They're not the kind of moves I'm really all that comfortable with, but I think we're really in a very extraordinary time. And hopefully, we can craft a solution. And it may be with this warrant and maybe with an alternative budget put in place that somehow gets us to the place that we need to be in, in serving the public.
Okay, I, I, I've been talking a lot, but I'd like to offer one, one, one and a half other thoughts. First, in the budget that we bring forward to reduce the state revenue sharing, that from what people have been saying, $250,000 sounds overly optimistic. So I would, I would redo, I would think we ought to reduce that right away. And secondly, that we should look at the budget and say, how much of the municipal budget is actually controllable? You know, for example, as, as Bruce just said, we could hold off on bidding out, you know, any capital projects where we're not already committed. And see how much, you know, if we had to scrap that, like, I think one item was Plains, Plains Road Paving. You know, how much, how much can we save by not doing that this year? I'm not saying that's a great idea not to do it, but how much could we save by not doing it? Because in budgets that I've worked on, where places where I've worked, when you get down to that kind of questioning, there's not a whole lot that's really that discretionary. You know, unless you're saying that, you know, we're going to just furlough the town staff, you know, and not, not, you know, but we have, you know, it's like, but you have to have a transfer station. You have to have somebody to collect taxes, you know. So not, you know, I think you find it's surprisingly limited when you look at what's really controllable. And just to get a feel of that and see if that, what's controllable in the budget, how does that match up with 25% of the, you know, 25% increase in, in the draw on fund balance? Obviously, that's not for tonight. I mean...
Yeah, but it's really important, I think, to have this discussion. And I, I guess I would follow that up with, even if we were to make those moves, I think we should still give some authority forward, if you will, to, to make changes. Because again, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, I believe we will be wrong. And we have some very bright people in the budget committee, we have some great people on the select board, but we just don't know, I believe, where we'll end up. And, and actually, we could end up getting hit twice. I mean, we don't know, we could have another countrywide shutdown in November when this thing comes back. Hopefully, things are moving in a, a direction where there's more testing and just what you're reading on the news and so on and so forth that will take us to a little bit of a different place. But we, there are, there are the most significant unknowns than I can ever recall having to deal with in personal economics and in governance.
Yeah. This is, this is Ellen. I, I think that the warrant provision is fine. I would ask, how do you define what's related to coronavirus? That's a hard one, and it could be anything. Essentially, I'm finding it out with our insurance carrier, our business insurance carrier, anything, anything that happens these days, they can draw a line back to virus. So, and they won't pay. So I think it's important to think a little bit about that. You know, just...
Yeah, I think that language didn't seem to draw any concern on the legal end, but you know, again, this is not, this is not put in, this is not put in the final form as to how we would actually ask the question on the ballot. I mean, maybe it just simple stops at revenue shortfalls. But you know, again, people could be critical of that, if you will, that that's too much the power given to the board. So I, I'm trying to thread a needle somehow.
I, I understand that. I just encourage you to...
I don't know what I'm going to have to explain.
Bruce?
Yes.
I like the idea of the warrant safety net with the cap triggers, if you will. I would also ask experts on the budget committee whether or not that should be coupled with a drawdown figure so that that 25% does not exceed a certain percentage of the undesignated fund balance. Because as you all know from your, your broad experience, once those fund balances get below a certain level, they're virtually impossible to restore without mill rate increases and you're playing catch up for years and years and years. So I would, I would balance out the discretionary drawdown with some sort of a cap that says you're not going to take that undesignated pot of money below a certain percentage of whatever baseline number you want to use. But I think that would be a discussion that the budget committee should have. I also think Marty is perhaps spot on in terms of looking at the large ticket state grant items to municipalities and maybe doing some modest level of reduction to reflect the fact that we have no idea what will be in the pipeline. And, you know, we, we probably will be unpleasantly surprised in the first installment of payments because the state's going to be hit just as hard as we are. But if we rebound and revenues, and revenues rebound on the state level, then maybe they make us hold at the back end of the fiscal year. But I think maybe some level of adjustment there on that big ticket line item, in addition to what Eric has already done, might be appropriate.
Can I just speak to the 25%? I want to make it very clear that I threw in a number just satisfied by the writing of the question. So if there's some crafting in terms of what funds should be included and to what percentage is or what baselines there should be, I do see that as something that needs to be worked out to find what is at question. So I'm in no way married to just that 25%, just on that fund balance.
So Eric, roughly, what is 25% of the current fund balance?
For the undesigned fund, about $250,000, let's see. Let me, let me look, I've got it here, I don't have the screen share.
And, and following up on that, Ellen, it could, you know, 25% of it on what date? Or with, you know...
I know, I was just asking right now, yeah. I think that you may have a problem, or we may have a problem this year, this fiscal year. So, you know, there's still three months to go.
Yeah. What's the balance of the state payments? Are we pretty much whole with, with the big ticket state grants and revenue sharing this year?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're actually in a really good spot this year. I think the only area that we're going to see real impacts are motor vehicles over the next three months. That's, that's a big category for us. But again, you know, we started off this year planning on $50,000 less than what we were probably going to get to begin with. I think that we're actually going to be okay. I think that this year, because we're, we have that staggered approach and because we've had a really good year to date so far and because a lot of that money comes in from leases, I, I'm a lot more comfortable that we're going to have, we're not going to have that on line that we would have anticipated going into the undesigned fund that we originally thought. So that's that tail end impact. But as far as our operating budget this year, I don't think we're going to see losses that will cause us to need to dip into the undesigned fund to make out the difference.
And property taxes, have, have we passed that date on property tax?
Yeah, February, second half was due in February, so we're actually, we're in a good spot.
Okay, that's great. That's great.
I have a couple comments. This is Catherine. The Department of Motor Vehicles has said that all new car registrations won't be taking place, so they won't be paying their excise. Reregistrations can be done online, so we probably won't be getting any new ones in maybe for the whole three months. But at least in the near term, we won't be. And what was my other question? Oh, we have a policy about, and it is a policy, so it could be changed, but I would rather see us try to adhere to it as written, that we do keep the 2/12ths in the undesigned fund and we not draw down below that. And if we are going to exceed that, I'd like us to be upfront about changing that policy now so that it's apparent to everyone that we're not going to go below whatever the new number is. I'm done.
I, I agree, Catherine, that that's an important number for liquidity purposes. And if things get worse, we will need our liquidity.
So I, I will try to get into this question here, cooperating.
I think one thing I can do is sit down with Eric and better craft what this warrant article looked like. And if you can, in conjunction with the budget committee in particular, and the board, I guess, on, on Monday, talk about some of the larger moves we might be able to make right up front.
Yeah, I'll be ready with that by Monday.
Okay, well, okay, that's fine.
Unfortunately, I wish I could.
My final comment, I do like, I, I do agree that the, the statement added to the budget about the board having the authority to make those changes is a good idea because they're going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
We've run out of money. But I do think that it would be worth looking at the budget. First of all, I, I think we have to reduce the revenue sharing budget. You know, at, at, at best, we might be level funded, but to, to project an increase, I think that would cause some consternation among residents who, who, you know, who, who like, who deal with numbers. And I think it would cast doubts about the whole budget. But that, that being said, the rest of the budget, I think, is, I, I don't think there's enough there to really worry about in revenues. But I do think it's important to look at the expense side of the budget and not to put, not to put this out as a public document, but to say, these are things that we can postpone until we see how bad it's going to get, you know, like capital projects. And what other things can we do if we go, if, if the, if the situation is so bad that a 25% draw on, on fund balance is not going to be enough to balance the budget? You know, because the longer we go without making those changes, the less impact they have on the budget. So I think it's important, again, not as a public document, but to just be, say to public, we have identified things in here that we're going to postpone until we see what's coming up. And we've identified other things that no one is going to like it when we do this, but there are other things that we can do. So, you know, to, to keep from, you know, becoming insolvent, we're having a negative, a negative financial report.
I, I would, I would hope when this warrant article is actually presented, we would, again, not create a public document about these are the moves necessarily, but there would be public discussion around the fact that the kinds of things that we would look at, putting off a project or whatever. And I think I mentioned something like paving. Again, it's not, and, and I probably would use the language delay rather than cancel because we do have a road plan, which I think as, as we recover in subsequent year or so, hopefully, that we would be able to adhere to. The other thing I would say on the authority doing this is I, I don't want this to be, we have to be in trouble in order to pull the trigger on it. I think we will have to be making continual monthly and quarterly or whatever projections as we go through the year until we feel we have sort of like sea legs and how the ship of state is going to run and so forth. But I would hope that we would be anticipating with more information and knowledge as we go through and deeper into the fiscal year to make some of the changes so we won't actually get into a bind of having committed on something 30 days down the road when we know there's something bad coming 60 days down the road.
I just want to make a comment from a select board perspective. I am in total opposition to having documents that are not being made public. I would like, if we're going to do planning, I think it needs to be public. People have been getting in trouble in that, just in our own county in the past few weeks. I think if, I think a better way to approach that is what Bruce just talked about, having it as, we've looked at these different areas, these are things we might consider, but if we're going to make a hard document and use that as a basis to move forward, I think it needs to be public.
That's a good comment. I mean, I think there will always be some sort of working communication and documents going forward on how we might deal with any particular thing at, at budget wise over time. But I, I don't think we have, should have a set of pre-arranged costs that this is what we're going to do with X and so on and so forth. I mean, I'm hoping that we can also give some flexibility because there could be some changes. For example, and this is a real wild shot, I'm just giving it as an example, please, the cost of paving materials could be a lot lower. We've had some bidding in terms of opportunity cost. Well, there may be people who really want to work and bid on some of the kinds of things that we feel are still valuable. So this, I'm not going to say it cuts both ways because I don't believe it does in, in terms of we're going to have sudden revenues and happy days of year again necessarily, but some of the changes that could be coming down the pipe might be counter or do.
This is Ellen again. So just for clarification, Bruce, if you're going to, and I understand the need to, you know, be making monthly or quarterly or whatever, you know, you're reconsidering, looking at expenditures, looking at revenues and maybe having to move things around or pull things out of undesigned. But then I think that that point in time issue or, you know, the dollar cap or limitation issue that Marty brought up sort of comes into play because level of the fund balance, is it 25% every time you go to it?
Yeah. It's not. That's not, that was not my intention.
Okay, well, I, you know...
There is, that middle portion of that has some crafting issues and I absolutely...
Yeah, okay.
What I wanted to do was present to you...
Yep.
The, what I had at the moment.
Yeah. And does that language only live? It only has a lifespan of the fiscal year? Or do you have to say in fiscal '21? Because it shouldn't go on forever.
It says the ensuing year, I think, is the way it's written, which is modeled after the language we use on other, other, other warrant articles, similar, if you will, the ensuing fiscal year.
It's time limited.
Yeah, it is time limited.
And the last thing I'll say is that you could take a little comfort in the fact that, at least the state, they can't change, like rev sharing formulas, because they have to come back into session to do that. And they're adjourned, and they can't come, they can't reconvene, and they have no way of voting remotely. So what will drive down rev sharing, or Betty, or Better, is just going to be, you know, the floor falling out of the revenue stream coming into the state, whenever it is they calculate it, which you won't know till July, basically, when they close the books in the cascade, you know, fund balance, and they calculate the cascade. So if they don't come back in, that you can predict what your rev sharing is going to be with some certainty.
All right. I did look a little bit at the spreadsheet to try and answer a couple of questions that came up. At the end of this fiscal year, oh, actually, I'll put this way, at the end of the budget year, FY '21 budget year, we were looking with the current scenario, current budget estimates, about $1.1 million in that undesigned fund balance.
Eric, can you repeat that number? I'm sorry.
About 1.1 million, so.
1.1 million?
Yeah, and that's, that's at the, with a number of fairly conservative estimates, that's what we expect to have after everything's said and done at the end of FY '21, so June 30th, 2021, that's the balance. And that's what we use to calculate that two-twelves, yeah, two-twelves, no. Is it two-twelves? Yeah, two-twelves. And so we would meet that threshold currently, I think even if we have some shortfalls in our motor vehicles and things like that, that we'll still be able to be at that two-twelve threshold. I will say that non-tax revenues for the town are usually about 1.2 million, tax revenues are 3.8 million. So, and of those non-tax revenues, almost 50% of it is motor vehicles. So to Marty's point about a lot of our expense items being fairly fixed, a lot of our revenues are as well. People, they might be able to sell their car, they might not, but those vehicle excise taxpayers are fairly stable, and they reduce by a small percentage every year, but once you bought a new car, you're on the hook until you sell that new car to somebody else. So I think there is a lot more stability in our non-tax revenue stream, non-real estate tax revenue stream than what we might be really thinking. And so that's a big piece of this. I think that if the Board and the Budget Committee are looking to be proactive, then maybe we ought to push some of the process back. You know, the state statute said we have to get this to the clinic 60 days ahead. We only have to have it printed 30 days ahead, so we could cheat a couple of weeks in there if we need to. It may be worth reconsidering this process and doing some of that work, if it's, the best way I think to help people would be to lower the mill rate. And that's something that we could do by more heavy use of the fund balance, or by cutting projects. Because again, you know, what they're paying for as far as all of our other revenues, a lot of those are, it's their property taxes, the big thing. But to Bruce's point, a lot of that comes from the school, so, you know, how far are we going to drive ourselves into the end on that?
So where do we end up? We end up at what, 3.6 is what we're saying?
For, for what, for the?
For the mill rate. That's municipal, is that 3.6?
Yeah, about 3.6 in schools, about.
So if we go through with a scalpel and very fine-tuned, we could get it back to 3.5, for example. If we hammer it away, maybe we could get it down to 3.25 or something to that. So, I mean, I mean.
I get that point. That's a good, that's a fair point. I think, though, you know, saying somebody's on the hook to pay a tax is one thing, whether they'll actually come in and pay the tax is another thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know they can't register their car, but if they're not going anywhere, well, you know, what do they care? Or maybe they're going to take a chance. I mean, people are going to have to make some really tough, you know, hard decisions. So.
At this point, I'm wondering, because we are getting later, and I don't mind staying, I'm not complaining, but I, I think if it's all right with the rest of the select board, I'd like to hear from the Budget Committee what their path forward, preferred path forward would be. Would they like to meet in the next week and then give a different proposal to the select board? Or are they happy with leaving things the way they are?
So there's a question, Budget Committee.
Okay, well, I'll talk, because I always talk. I, I feel like, like I said before, that the proposal that we had ended up with last week, which you all saw at the top of the meeting, was a good, solid proposal. I do think, I understand the point, Bruce, about, you know, going through with a scalpel and taking that time and whatever, and it doesn't, you know, the return on the investment of time isn't, isn't great, and it's going to be off by a factor of whatever percent. At the end of the day, I do think that I would like to see, you know, I like the changes that Eric went through and made. It's at least, you know, in the coronavirus scenario, I think it's a fairer document to put in front of voters. And I like that in conjunction with the safety net resolution, or warrant article, or whatever you call it. I don't, I agree, there's not really much point in spending huge amounts of more time trying to refine it, because it won't, it'll only be, sort of have this marginal impact.
Others? Catherine asked for feedback from Budget Committee, so if you certainly want those opinions.
I think.
You asked for some more.
I think the, the only item in the budget that, that really needs to be adjusted is the revenue sharing. And again, you know, we're guessing at that. I, I don't think, I don't think we should have a budget that shows a $50,000 increase in revenue sharing, when we've all been talking about, you know, these scenarios that are not really pessimistic, I think that they're realistic, and if anything, that things might be worse than what we're saying. So I would think that that should be changed.
I agree. I mean, I think it's mostly a revenue flow issue, and of course, we're, you know, when we talk about using undesigned funds and so forth, we're calling that revenue, but it's really our savings, if you will, being reused, if you will, for revenue. So I think we want to use that if we need to, but we need to be very judicious about it.
I think that on the expense side, that the budget as it currently stands reflects our priorities as a, as a town. If we need to change it, I think we need to change it as we see what's happening, and things like you were talking about, the coastal major projects are the only things that we could do. I mean, we could meet again as Budget Committee and say, okay, we'll put off paving roads for a year. That's probably the one big ticket item that could be deferred without a major impact on town services. Almost everything else is continuity of effort, and that's actually continuity of effort too, but it is one of those things that you do put off, which pay for it later.
Yeah, and to that point, I think that if we wanted to defer payment, that wouldn't reduce the mill rate, or allow us to reduce any other fees, it would help put more money in the bank for next year. But if we're trying to do that, help people now, you know what I mean?
Doesn't help.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure how to, I think that, I guess, you started saying it really is a revenue-driven issue, and we could, we could try to, if things are really bad, we could say, we're going to cut a project, in order to have more money in the bank to offset next year.
Or, yeah, if revenues crash harder than we expect, as long as they crash, before we spend the money on paving.
Yeah. There is, there is another tool, and that is a special town meeting.
Yeah.
Or a special Florida town meeting, or even a special ballot town meeting. What I'm trying to do is put in place a tool that, and with the great feedback that we've gotten tonight, and I, and I agree with Marty, I think we should probably make that revenue sharing pessimistic in nature, rather than, well, I don't say it's optimistic, I think it was based on some previous accuracy, expectations. But, I mean, we could be at a point in September where we just say, you know, we didn't consider that 800 people would be out of work in Reedfield, Maine, and they're just not going to pay their taxes. So we need to have a special Florida town meeting to talk about this.
I think, addressing one of, I believe it was Ellen's comment, if one of the goals, it may have been Eric, is to reduce taxes, I know that we don't have the largest share of that, because we're only a quarter of the tax bill. But if you're looking at delaying a project, I think you would want to do it before you vote on the budget, so that it reduces the tax burden, rather than putting money in the coffers for the next year, if what you're trying to do is give relief to people currently.
So perhaps the way to, to move forward at this point is to take a look at the budget preparation calendar and blow a little bit more air into it. Maybe have one more Budget Committee meeting, so you can talk about, basically, the discussion that happened here, and determine if there are some moves that we can, can make.
Yeah.
And then proceed with approval.
We do have one scheduled for April 2nd, and I think the Select Board meeting on Monday, we can start to work on what that might look like.
Sure.
I mean, we, Budget Committee is also very interested in where the Select Board would like to go. I mean, you guys are the ones who have to run the show up, but we make a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
We want that to be the best iterative process that we can manage.
Well, the only way I can represent that is, you know, we don't have a huge staff, so reduction force and that kind of stuff, reduction media service, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So there are, and there are a lot of small departments, if you will, and going through and nickel and diming a lot of them, and, you know, I think we already responsibly broad forecasted many of those smaller departments, so it's really considering big moves.
Eric, quick question, it's Ralph. If I understood it correctly, the initial state projection for revenue sharing for Reedfield this year was around $290,000, and you budgeted $250,000, so there's already some stance or reduction, is, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So how much more would we want to go and, and still have a realistic number? We don't think $250,000 is realistic when we're whacked $40,000 off of it already?
I don't know. Ellen doesn't know, I don't think anybody knows, that's the trouble. It's, it's such a hard one. I mean, it's an easy target, because it's big, and it's, it would be a great place to build in some buffer, but I just don't know. And I won't, Monday, I won't in two weeks, right?
I think all we can say, Ralph, probably, is, here's a scenario, if we cut that in half, this is a scenario, if we cut it by 25%, and figure out what makes the most sense in presenting to voters and being sensitive to the current situation.
I wish I could go back and model that based on the 2007 to 11 recession, but they were screwing around with the ratios at that time, so it's completely masked.
You wouldn't have had apples to apples, and that would have.
Completely masked by all that mess, so I.
Hey, that was me doing that.
Eric, I would wrap up with final comments, if anybody has anything. I mean, this is a hearing, so, and it's been part of a hearing of the Board and the Budget Committee, and there's been some good discussion. So if there are any final comments, we'll just go ahead and wrap it up, and then obviously we'll figure out how we, how we need to work forward.
My, my final comment, Eric, you might want to call Kate Dufour at the Main Municipal Association, and ask her what she hears, what she's been hearing, because she's not only in touch with the legislature, but with, with many, many municipal officials.
Very suggestive.
She might have a feeling, what is everybody else thinking?
I'll ask, I'll ask.
Other comments? See, now I'm going to declare adjournment. Thank you, everybody.